So I will, if you could reschedule, that would be great. If not, I'll get caught up. So any contracts you get from engineering and stuff, please adopt, continue on trade with me and get them over to the survey review. This thing will be rescheduled, that would be great. If not, I understand. Yes, twenty eight, nine thirty, ten. Do you want me to give you this in your hand?
Nope, I got it.
And then last thing, thank you all for, oh, and so, thanks a lot to myself right there. No. Right, it sounded like, sounded like they were just giving you a, you're sorry, oh, they accept that proposal. It didn't have any limitations online at the line either. So it was probably okay.
Okay.
All this meeting order. This is, uh, now then, it's public hearing. Assessment hearings for the, uh, Waco, Waco Street, Waco Drive, and Hundred Eight Second and Ventry Street. Road, potential road project. Start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance, it's clear to the eye. You're not gonna save them here. And two or three. Alright, Mr. Leno, would you please call a roll? Mayor Pilon, present. Ray Mill.
Present.
House Member Alders, here. House Member Ryan, here. House Member Flattable.
Here.
City Engineer Shane, here. City Attorney Sarubi, here. Secretary Attorney Natalie Johnson.
Here.
Mayor City Administrator President Sarah Bill Call. Thank you very much. Alright, we'll start with a presentation regarding the road project. Again, just to clarification. Uh, this is the second of our required hearings. Um, it's been since our first hearing. November. There have been a number of, um, activities. Plans and specification for authorized and bids were left in conjunction with City of Ramsey. Um, there was a bid opening yesterday. And then we'll have a, uh, assessment, sort of assessment range. There's an opportunity for residents to weigh in. This is a public hearing. With completion of Mr. Nelson's presentation, people wanting to go on a way in. Ask you to step up to the podium. Speak clearly and loudly, we have a recording device here on the table. Here's your name and your address, and then your comments. And ask people to, let everybody speak once before you speak again. The other things that come to your mind, or you want to call upon something that you didn't hear said, or if you're bleeding your ass. We will, we will listen until everybody's had their ability to speak. Shane will start with your overview, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I will stand up and kind of stay off the side, so uh, hopefully you can, uh, both the council and the residents can hear me. Uh, my name's Shane Elton, I'm the city engineer, so uh, kind of run through these slides. So this is the project area, which is generally Waco Street, Waco Drive, Ventry Street, and Hundred Eight Second Lane. Uh, also, uh, in conjunction with this project, as the mayor stated, the city of Ramsey has, uh, designed and bid the project from kind of where the red lines are on the map. Uh, down with County Road, uh, the next neighborhood to the west, which is like, uh, Bering Street, Hundred Eight, I believe. Uh, and also another, uh, another neighborhood that's kind of over on the other side of County Road five. Uh, over by Green Valley Greenhouse. Uh, so this is the project area, uh, shown in red. Uh, and it's within Nowland. So again, just a little bit of background, a shorter presentation than at the public improvement hearing. Uh, but just by way of background, uh, Nowland ultimately maintains about thirty-four miles of paved roads and twenty miles of gravel. And this project length is point four five miles. So in other words, it took a fraction of what we, uh, own and maintain, uh, overall. And because it took a fraction of, of what the city ultimately maintains overall, uh, there's not enough money in the, uh, budget to fully fund the group of projects, and therefore the city funds them with a combination of city funds by partially assessing to the benefit of properties. Uh, and lastly, this progress project was programmed in our capital improvement plan for the year twenty one four. So, uh, we don't have real detailed records, but, uh, based on what we found, the road was originally constructed, probably was kind of ground surface uh, nineteen seventies, and then paved in nineteen ninety. Therefore, the pavement, uh, is actually thirty-four years old. This is the slide from last fall. Uh, you know, we've done, we made some repairs, uh, of course, and patching, uh, in some areas, but the roads were just, uh, kind of surpassed where they still like. So I just have a couple of pictures of the existing, uh, road surface. And one thing I just wanted to point out in the picture is the Batumis curb. Uh, on the side. So this, uh, most of the local roads in the city of Nowland utilize rural section, which means that we utilize, uh, ditches and driveway culverts, so road culverts to face more water. Uh, and here we have, uh, Batumis curb. Uh, Batumis has a whole lot quite as well to concentrate its slope, uh, compared to concrete curb and gutter, and therefore, uh, so this project, uh, proposes to replace that Batumis curb with a concrete curb better. Uh, and that picture just shows some, uh, raveling or some pavement, uh, erosion, uh, kind of off on the side, uh, near the, uh, Batumis curb where the, the pavement or where the water runs, I'm sorry. Uh, so quickly on the proposed improvement, uh, the plans call for reclaiming the existing Batumis surface, uh, constructing a new concrete curb and gutter, paving, uh, new with a three and a half inches thick, matching the existing driveways, uh, replacing the roadway culverts, uh, catch bases and, and, uh, underground storm sewer. And then one, one thing I just wanted to point out is that this road is constructed into a convoy, so heavy vehicles, uh, which are on our road which is generally our. So a little bit of the process or the equipment that you expect to see, uh, on the project. This is what a rebuilding machine looks like, this, uh, in this picture, the replainer is traveling from right to left. Uh, they already made the, the path, unless the right, turn around, making the path from right to left, so there's uh, the existing Batumis surface, depending on the front of the wheel, and then that machine kind of planks up the, uh, existing pavement with the underlying gravel. And then that, uh, now that product, it looks like they're four inches existing of gravel and two inches, uh, of uh, pavement, but we grind that all together, now it's a six inch of bigger, so we're, we're, we're kind of recycling in place. Uh, and we're, we're gonna reuse that material for rebuilding our road, whichever may have a stronger section when we rebuild. Uh, after the uh, road is replained, you'll see the road grader out there, uh, shaping it. When it replains, it kind of fluffs material up. Uh, so then they, they shape it, and then they compact it right away. And that's just what you can dry on during construction. Uh, we can't leave the road, uh, you know, kind of fluffed up or in that, uh, uncompact state. Uh, so you see that happen right away. That doesn't mean the road's done yet, but, uh, the next thing that will happen will be the construction of the concrete curb and gutter. So for this project, uh, what is proposed is a sustainable curb, but you see the pictures. Uh, and then at the driveway, uh, will be knocked down a little bit, so you won't have to go over that full, uh, four inch bump when you go into your drive. Uh, after the curb and gutter then, I have, the, the curb has to cure, uh, for a minimum of normally seven days, uh, concrete kind of uh, continues to cure over time. Usually it's full strength, kind of a twenty-eight day, uh, but usually after seven days, we can uh, perform work, you know, around it without damaging the, the curb and gutter. Uh, at that point, we're, we're paving the base parts of Batumis, that's what this looks like. Uh, and we can stop the road on two lefts. So there are the base borders, and then there's the whole area of Batumis.
Shane? Just real quick, you mentioned sustainable curving, and all that picture shows the typical ninety degree curving. The first one showed the sustainable. Can you just touch on the difference between that curving and the one before that was sustainable?
Yeah, so this, this curve is, this is called a B curve, uh, which is just a mid dot standard plate. Uh, this is probably a B six eighteen, and the six inches would be the, the height of the curb. And then the eighteen inches is the width of the gutter.
The picture you showed before that was sustainable?
Some of the picture, yeah. And then this, this picture is, is a sustainable curb. Uh, we still have the, a gutter pan, but the curb's kind of rounded, it's only four inches. Excuse me, only four inches tall versus six inches tall. Uh, so therefore it's easier to drive over, uh, with a vehicle or a bomb or, uh, whatever.
And the idea, most of the water runs in, in this curving?
That's correct.
And that saves the wear and tear on the Batumis and directs it to catch basins, which then directs it to the white lines.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, the other thing is, two lips, can we hear this all the time? So you're gonna, you're gonna lay down on today's course, how long? How long will that dirt that they drive on, and how long will the base course be there before the final wear course is put up? Typically?
Uh, so typically, the, uh, typically what, what occurs is there are different subcontractors uh, that come into the project. So there's an overall general contractor. Uh, on this project, there is a, uh, the volunteer, the subcontractor, that's actually, uh, purpose construction right across the street. Uh, they, they'll put in a storm sewer, uh, uh, Schmed curb in the concrete subcontractor, they would come in and construct the, uh, curb and gutter. Uh, and then, uh, generally the, the general, uh, which, uh, would, would do the, the paving. So it's a little bit, uh, subject to timing and, uh, again, you know, curing of concrete, uh, but I would say from the time that the road is replained to the time that, uh, you know, replained, and that very next thing that they schedule will be the storm sewer, the, the color crossings. Those color crossings are probably in a few days, when you might see a break of a day or two. Uh, and then shortly thereafter, as long as, you know, it's raining, that we're expecting tonight, uh, we would expect the concrete curb and gutter to come in. Uh, and then, uh, a few days going on, about seven days after that would be the, uh, paving. So it might be a few weeks uh, where they're driving on the gravel surface.
And, and can they drive into their driveways? How long before they can drive all the concrete into their driveways?
Uh, at least three days. Uh, and sometimes, uh, as long as, so, uh, during, during the concrete curving process, uh, there's a notice that goes out notifying all the residents and what they had scheduled for. And, uh, at that point, excuse me, at that point, uh, you know, you have to have your gravel possibly in the street, um, just to allow the curving to go through. Uh, so there is some coordination that goes on with that, but that's something that's done with the contractor and then our staff to help coordinate that for residents.
And so, once they can drive over the concrete curving, and it could be a period of time before the blacktop comes in, how do they get over that four inch curb to get into their driveways?
Uh, the gravel's there. Well, this is gravel that's placed against the concrete, uh, to provide a ramp in and over them.
Now, they're cleared out before the, the Batumis, okay?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's actually, you know, uh, in a recent property like this, there are several, uh, extra sap, if you will, just to continue to maintain, uh, access to individual property as, as well as the order to be of license.
And then, then mailboxes, like the previous projects, they'll, they'll be grouped at the end of the development, and everything's like mail there, or what happens when mail?
Yeah, generally temporary mailboxes are installed. Uh, the, uh, again, we will send a, uh, similar to our, our previous project, we generally send a, a project notice out after we know an actual schedule. Uh, and we include the mailbox locations for temporary mailboxes. So during construction, uh, the mailboxes will generally are, you know, the overhanging of the road, right? So that the mail carrier can open the, the uh, mailbox, place the mail in, but the way that they overhang the road can, uh, inflict with all this large construction equipment, such as that paver, you think of that paver dragging by. Uh, you can see the, the hopper that sticks out. If there's a mailbox sticking in the road there, uh, it would wipe the mailbox up. So uh, the mailbox would have to be temporarily moved to, uh, a lot with construction, and then, uh, similar to past projects that would be replaced with our swingway standard mailboxes.
Thank you.
Okay, so going back, again, this is the base core paving, and what you noticed in this picture, uh, you know, you noticed on paving the, the Batumis right on the gravel surface, but you also noticed, I think, between the curb and the sidewalk, uh, none of it's restored, you know, it's just kind of the bare dirt. And so, one of the reasons that we do this too well, because when the pavement is new, it's still, it's kind of tender, uh, and it gets easily marred up. And, uh, so after the base works is paved, that's when we, uh, do all the dirt work behind the curbs, we bring the ceder then, uh, have them do the, the seeding, and try to get that all, all that work completed before the wear course is constructed. So that the, uh, the wear course of the new, the new road surface you're gonna see doesn't get all marred up.
You mean they smooth?
Hey, you're fine, yeah, I got a seat. Yep. So, in this picture, you see, uh, this project used, uh, looks like a new sign, but you can see, uh, on this picture, all the, the, the work behind the curb is done, and kind of the wear course paving is the last thing. Just to give you an idea of the typical construction process. Uh, the typical section for this project consists of, uh, a twenty foot back-to-back road, that's what, that's now. We did have some discussion at the public improvement hearing. Uh, we asked for feedback, is the road too wide, too narrow, and the feedback that we received was the road was inadequate as it will pave to the, the need to park on the street, uh, and to, I want to see that narrowed up because, uh, uh, move the ability for the on-street park. Okay, now for the, the good news. Uh, so bids were received for this project yesterday, May twentieth. Uh, again, this project was combined with the city of Ramsey, uh, so we made it a much larger project, and uh, seven bids overall were received. And GMH asphalt, uh, is the apparent goal bidder. So the bids, uh, were, uh, very good, they reflected kind of a, a, a uh, uh, good bidding environment, basically the contractors are proud of, not a lot of work out there as compared to the previous hearings. So the original engineer's estimate for the Nowland portion of the project uh, was seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, and the new project estimate, based on the bids, uh, is five hundred and seventy thousand, which includes a thirty thousand dollar contingency. So uh, there are times when, uh, we, uh, get into the road project, we discover things that we weren't aware of. Uh, I just was, uh, speaking with one of the residents today before the meeting, and and there's, there's one thing that we weren't aware of, which is, uh, there's apparently a, a public fight between Roger Lake and the wetland, uh, that, uh, have been there for, uh, many years, uh, and so we might have, that, that may be something that we have to, uh, address. So, and again, I just want to scrap these, our, so now we got bid, and now we continue to go down this process every time that we meet with you, or every time, uh, that we get together, we have, uh, tighter information, I guess, so we started out, uh, you know, kind of, uh, um, uh, but that's what we did, uh, based on typical reconstruction costs for other roads in the city. But there might be differences about this project as compared to other projects that were basing those up and so on. And then we go to a fee the builder report. Okay, at that point, we may get a few days to look at the actual conditions, try to estimate some quantities based on conditions. Uh, but we still don't, don't, aren't to the point where we have, uh, construction plans where we naturally calculate the quantity. Uh, now we're to the point where we have construction plans, we're naturally calculating quantities, we have bids based on those estimated quantities. Uh, and, and it's still, now, so now things are a lot tighter, but there's still, uh, a possibility for uh, you know, occasional, uh, you know, soft spot under the road or, uh, something that we're just not aware of. Uh, so, uh, this project, and based on the city's past practice, uh, the city uses a prudent assessment method in which each property, uh, then, a lot of the, the project or accesses the project, uh, receives an equal assessment. There are eighteen directly benefiting assessments. And as stated in your notice, um, the assessment amount, based on our previous document, was eight thousand seven hundred per unit. Uh, that final assessment amount is averaged over time, uh, tenure time period, and the interest rate, uh, will be six percent. And in blue here, I noted, uh, kind of similar to the actual, uh, bids received. So in the past, what the city has done is, uh, notice, providing the notice of the assessment amount, uh, similar to they, they did tonight with an estimate, and then after the project is complete, they re, uh, take another look, recalculate these amounts before adopting them. So in the past, the city has, if there's substantial possibilities, they have considered, uh, lowering that assessment prior to adopting it after the project's done, so. So again, uh, there are eighteen properties, uh, within the city of Nowland that are proposed to be assessed. And those are all shown, uh, outlined in yellow or can have a white dot on this. Uh, this is. Uh, so now, just kind of touch back on schedule, uh, we have again in the bid opening, uh, yesterday, we're here and may, uh, consider or conducting the assessment hearing. Uh, and then, you know, assuming that the whole city moves forward with this project, uh, the next step would be for the, the city councils to approve the bid and award the contract. Uh, we'd expect construction to start sometime in June on the overall project. That doesn't necessarily mean that it will start in June, uh, in your neighborhood. So uh, what generally happens in, you know, any type of projects is the contractor has, there's been a couple of performance clauses in the contract. Uh, the one is a continual project clause, which generally, basically means they can't come in, reclaim the road, and just disappear for two months. Um, the other one is, you know, focus on kind of bite-sized pieces. So in other words, they have to start in one neighborhood and kind of finish one neighborhood before moving on. So uh, at this time, this project had been awarded, we just have a bid, uh, but after, uh, assuming that the council awards of the project, our next step would be to notify contractors, we have a pre-construction conference, the contractor shares his proposed schedule with us. Uh, and then once the thing will be closer to actually starting, uh, generally a mail notice is sent to each property.
Oh, so Shane, because we, we haven't done a project like this in conjunction with another city before. And, and part of what Ramsey is doing is adjacent to this neighborhood. Uh, so we assume whatever's going on with their side will be happening in Nowland's side. The other portions of the project that Ramsey's doing this year are separate from this contiguous neighborhood. Um, so when they come in and do curving, will they go through the whole, when we do curving, or do you see it as? I think they've got three different neighborhoods, if you will, that they're doing in Ramsey, I remember right. Will they do, are you anticipating that this project and the adjacent neighborhood in Ramsey would all be done as a project? So whatever initial work is done, it would all be done for all of that?
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate that, you know, with all of Waco Street, Waco Drive, uh, Ventry Lane, and Hundred Eight Second would be done at the same time. Uh, that's what I would anticipate.
All the way down to Ramsey's twenty-seven and one.
Correct. Correct. That's, that's, that's how I would anticipate it, and then, uh, Bering Street, and I believe it's one eighty, and that's literally like the next neighborhood to the west up here. Uh, I mean, so there's a chance we could try to stage, uh, a subcontractor or something like that, uh, at similar times. The other, uh, project that's over by Green Valley Greenhouse, that's, that's a little bit different operation, that doesn't have curb and gutter, that neighborhood has, uh, ditches and road culverts. Uh, and I see that being done at completely independent time load.
Uh, part of the same bid, same contractor.
Correct. Um, so.
And, and just to clarify for the residents, once the council um, does authorize, if you have the hearing, once we approve the bids and award the contract, there is no going back.
That's correct.
So tonight, we, we still have options, but once we award the bid. And, and when do you anticipate that Ramsey will be?
Uh, Ramsey is, uh, I'll probably send the, the city engineer from the city of Ramsey an email tonight after the meeting. Uh, to inform him of, of the council decision after the assessment hearing tonight. Uh, they, uh, have a meeting, uh, Tuesday at that, that consider.
And our option, Mr. Mayor, council, is to either approve the ultimate bid, which is how we, that was just a bid, so that if we decided as a city not to, you as a council decide not to go forward, the Ramsey part of the project still goes forward. So we, when the contract, when the contractors were bidding, they had to bid on the Ramsey part and our part, and with the same contractor, the, uh, GMH asphalt was the bonus bidder on both parts and, and overall. So they, they, your, your options, when you say, we've got options, your options are reject it and start over on your own, or to accept that bid and to work with the city of Ramsey.
And, and till that point, attorney groupie, uh, and, and council, and residents, these bids uh, are about twenty-eight percent under our year test. Uh, so one thing that, that we found for the past several years before this year, uh, project cost, depending on upward trajectory, of somewhere in between ten and, you know, sometimes fifteen percent, uh, inflation each year. And, uh, so we were, you know, considering that to do normal and build that ten to fifteen percent on different items inflation into our estimates for the work to be, to be completed this year, when we did our estimates last fall. What we found is that prices have actually come down far. So we had, had, uh, you know, we had estimated this upward trajectory, prices have actually decreased some. Uh, and so that spread was, was pretty considerable. Another component of that spread, I believe, is this project, but the random portion of bid for that was over two million dollars. Well, that's, that's the line here of the project, and there are economies of scale with, in buying these projects. Uh, and so I think the bids are really advantageous. Uh, but that's not to say that the city, you know, the city does have the option to reject these bids and, you know, do it on their own eventually, so.
Which would probably be a project that would be bid, it'd probably be sometime next year, but I agree with Engineer Nelson, economies of scale have really benefited you. And that would be available if you did that on your own.
So can, real quick, on the GMH, uh, and H bid, are we offering a bid number one?
We are offering a bid number one.
And so on, the GMH asphalt, ultimate, ultimate bid number one is four oh six, seven nineteen?
Correct.
One? And it looked like we came in at five seventy?
Sure, so our project costs are all the project costs. So it includes, uh, you know, the, the preparation of planning specs, the construction and installation during, uh, construction, the soil boarding that we did, the geotechnical curb that retired, uh, during construction. So there's the construction cost, and there's all the city's soft costs, and together make a, make the project cost. And as I mentioned earlier, there's also a thirty thousand dollar contingency still included in those numbers. So, uh, that will be for our on-fersee services.
Like culverts, you know?
Like culverts, or, yeah, that's correct.
Or if we do plant another, you know, I don't know, trees under there somewhere.
Right.
We think, we, we think we want, but.
Yep, and the. Yep, and the uh, previous uh, project to the north of your neighborhood. Uh, the other arm of the force, and there are a lot of quarter right, quarter right roads where there's no trees, literally uh, laid across swamps, bridge roads. Uh, so there's a considerable expense of estimating those and doing some rate corrections. Uh, so with that, we'd expect uh, construction to occur uh, in between the months of, we started sometime in June. Uh, through September of this year, September thirtieth, twenty twenty four is the substantial completion date. Uh, and again, you see in blue, uh, so sometime after there, if it were, I would expect that the city council would consider adopting the assessment. And at that time is when I would provide uh, the city with a breakdown of actual cost incurred. Uh, so that you could, you know, use that information and determine whether or not uh, we would like to consider a different amount and will present and, and mail uh, to the residents.
And then at that point, once we know a final number and once, once we have a final number from you, also decide with the final wish to the residents. They have a certain amount of time that they can pay in full, at least they'll choose, or allow it to be assessed over a ten year period on their taxes at six percent. So if they pay in full, there's no interest, is that correct?
That's correct. So generally, uh, the city will send a mail notice, or our past practice has been. Uh, if the council adopts a lower amount, uh, the city will send a mail notice to each property owner. Informing them of that new lower amount. And again, the number can only go down from here, the, the eight thousand seven hundred that was included in your notice. Uh, that's the maximum amount that the city can charge you. If they wanted to charge you a different amount, you would have to go through this whole process again, re-notice the public hearing. Uh, and the city has not done that in the past. They, they want this project, uh, they have agreed uh, and previous actions. To pay for the sub-rate corrections, the, the range improvements, as well as any cost over, so unforeseen services.
So that eighty seven hundred is based on the new amount, the lesser amount?
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I'm just about done with the presentation, so we can give the residents a chance to state the bid. This is a kind of a four hole process in which uh, there's a, a minutes in our, our record of this book, so. Uh, but the eight thousand seven hundred is based on the original project estimates. And is likely to come down uh, considerably based on the actual bid received. Right? The council chooses to pass those things onto the residents uh, like they have in the past. So again, we'd expect that to occur uh, September thirtieth or, or sometime after the potential completion date. Uh, that's when we know uh, all we, uh, or most of the project costs, there's always some amount of punchless work that's, it's done the following years. Uh, so usually they'll, they'll come in, they'll, you know, they'll do the seeding uh, and they'll do ninety nine percent of the work. Uh, but if they have to touch up the seeding uh, every once in a while, there's a, a driveway that gets cracked or, you know, a garbage truck run over it before it's, you know, cured all the way or something like that. Um, and the contractor comes out and repairs those items uh, before final completion, which will be June thirtieth, October twenty twenty five.
And just so everybody knows, typically on projects like this, because of the wetlands that we have, we always have to have erosion control. Which means big ugly black fabric rolls to put, so that any of the, the degree um, ground or things don't wash down into the wetlands. Those have to stay there until all the seed work has, has shown substantial growth and keep, um, gradually loading any further. In the past, that sometimes it's until the next year, later in the summer. Um, people get a little tired of seeing those big black ugly things in the neighborhood, but they have to stay there until they make sure there's no more erosion. So that is something that, once the project's done, that will be a remainder there for one. That was, I was saying, we don't know what the final number will be that the council will adopt until all the costs are in, at the end of the project. And then the council will have that discussion. Whatever that number is, residents can pay fully with no interest. Uh, ahead of the deadline in the fall, or they can say, I'm just gonna put it on ten years at six percentage for over ten years. There are, are not other options. You can't say, I'm gonna do that for five years or it's either tenure assessment or cash up. You understand me?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Uh, just one, I guess I'll call a caveat to that, so the assessment can be paid off in full. Um, uh, at any time, so let's say, uh, so this is this project, you said it will be certified uh, by the end of November. Uh, to the county accessory's office. And uh, anything that's, that's paid off before it's certified, you know, at that point, the, the, it doesn't get certified. Uh, but if there's an amount certified, this used eight thousand seven hundred, that's a notice uh, amount. Uh, if somebody chose to pay that out the, the next year, they can still pay out uh, that amount, say in April of twenty twenty five. However, they have to pay for that full year of, of interest. Uh, so uh, generally the, the deadline is somewhere around uh, November first to, to fifteenth. Um, so if you're thinking of paying off this stuff in the fall, let's say just before twenty twenty seven. You'd wanna pay, pay that out in early November of twenty twenty six, uh, to avoid another full year interest. If you wait until January third, then you're paying that full year of interest uh, of twenty twenty seven.
And if you're not sure of the date, you can call the county auditor, they can tell you when they, you know, when, when's that break off date? But it is one of those things where you can't make partial payments, you, if you want to, after it's certified over onto the, your property taxes. If you wanna pay it, you have to pay it all off. You can't make a decision, well, I'm gonna pay part of it. I've got a little extra cash here, a couple thousand, I'm gonna reduce that assessment off. The assessor doesn't work that way. It's, it, this is all regulated by statute. But if you do have the ability to sort of prepay in full, like in year two or year three, if you so desire.
So uh, that concludes my presentation. I wanna just uh, sit over at the table such that uh, we start making public comment, like to respond better to uh, uh, the group here. And Mr. Mayor, I might have the city attorney say a few words on the, the legal process.
And on this, this is the second of the two required public hearings, as you've heard the mayor uh, state. Uh, at this point in time, this is your chance to give the council feedback on whether, about the assessment. Or whether new field of this project should move forward still or not, given what you've heard. Like the mayor said, this is, once we award the contract, that's the point of no term. And so the other thing I wanted to, to make sure everybody understood, in your notice it said that if you're gonna object to this. And you're gonna challenge the amount that you're being assessed in court, you have to file an objection before the, this public hearing ends. And, but with that, I will open it up for comment.
Um, council all received written documents tonight on who the properties involved with. Make sure you saw that. It's one of the questions we had before, that was the one we, that was combined in, one will change these prices. Alright, we will take public comment at this point. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Uh, Dean Meyer, uh, live on one eight, one six nine Waco. So one touch base on the price. The, the eight, eighty seven thousand was based on seven hundred fifty two, and if you remember right, it was actually. We weren't paying all fifty percent of the seven fifty two, and remember right, it's less than that. So the total cost coming down to five hundred seventy though. Um, why are we not recalculating what our price will be to give us at least a good idea? Cause I mean, you're gonna go from maybe seven thousand, probably more like five thousand, six hundred or six thousand dollars. A lot more digestible by all of us. And so, I mean, we obviously, if anyone knows anything about construction, you do it as a group and to, to come back and say, no, and then we gotta do it ourselves. Would be insane because the price is gonna go from eighty seven hundred dollars to probably sixteen thousand dollars for residents, so. Um, what is your thoughts on recalculating, giving us a better idea of what it would be at this point in time? I get it that you're gonna nail it down, but you wouldn't be nailing it down at the end by maybe a few hundred dollars per resident as opposed to thousands of dollars per resident. Am I correct?
Typically, yes. This, this is, um, let's say in our experience over the past number of years. This is probably a more significant number than I recall, coming in under the eight year estimate. Um, our year estimate's generally been right on. And how competitive the bidding is, that seven people bidding, seven companies bidding on this is significant. Um, having to be this much less, having bid just kind of yesterday, I don't know if anybody's calculated what a new potential cost would be. And one of the things you always wanna be careful of is, we come in and say, we're guesstimating this to be a much lower number. We also have to be careful because it's always nicer again to say, it's gonna be even lower than that? Rather than coming in saying, we thought it would be, I don't, even while throwing numbers out, so I don't confuse anybody. But if, if we were to reduce it by a thousand dollars, and it turns out we can only reduce it by eight hundred. That's more disappointing than coming in later. Now, understanding your point, rather than having eighty seven hundred hanging over your head. It should be significant, unless the greatest portion of this project um, is being picked up by the city because it's the base work, the gutters, the, the things that aren't typical. Uh, or other, you know, overlay projects or refilling projects. So I don't know if anybody's calculated that, having just gotten these numbers. And, and nobody likes to give a guess out to be too low. Shane, do you have anything, Scott can leave to say to that?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think you bring up a, a good point. I mean, we try to avoid the gathering number of all works. Um, and at this point, you don't know what that final number is gonna be exactly. Uh, but I mean, based on the uh, based on the bids. So with the uh, proposal of, of the um, the cop of basically replacing the surface, right? So the pavement, uh, doing a matching to your driveways, uh, curves, those things. We're gonna be fifty percent assessed to the residents, fifty percent uh, uh, paid by the city. And then the city, in addition to pay that fifty percent, was also picking up the rest of the cost, you know? So, and the, the original estimate, that amount was um, three hundred thirty thousand dollars. And it looks like it'll probably be somewhere in the two thirty, two hundred thirty thousand to two hundred fifty thousand range uh, based on bids. So, and again, we have unit prices that when we pay for actual unit of works completed. So this isn't a lump sum bid where the contractor just does, uh, you know, does a, a, an item and then gets paid based on a lump sum bid. They get paid on actual unit of work, so if they sell, and do the software, they get paid potentially. Um, and so it's, they're all just estimates until we get to the end. Uh, but based on that, the um, you know, the amount that is going to be assessed to the residents. Decreases from a hundred and fifty six thousand, uh, probably to somewhere, you know, a hundred and ten to a hundred and four thousand, somewhere in that range. Um, so it's a, a substantial reduction, uh, which would lower the assessment amounts. I'm confident by this a thousand dollars, probably more, so um. I'll leave it at that because again, we don't have uh, exact numbers, but it will make a, a difference in the assessment amount. And, and Mr. Mayor, you are correct, this is the largest discrepancy uh, as far as bids coming in underneath our estimate that we have uh, we have done, what we've seen.
So it's huge, exciting news for us, I'd say. When you went over that, and you're still got the letter, I know you didn't get the bids until this yesterday, so nobody was talking about reducing the eighty seven hundred till the end. With no idea what that is getting reduced to, um. And it, and it's a fixed bid, so I mean, you can't change other than change order basically on the project, I would assume, because this is their bid at this point.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Mayor, the, the unit prices are fixed. They, those, and those unit prices cannot change, uh, what our estimates are the, the quantities.
Quantities, the quantities of what?
So on these projects, uh, so you know, basically from, you know, years and years of doing this. What cities or governmental agencies are aware is we get much better bids when there's a lower amount of risk for the contractor on those. Uh, and so uh, these, these, these uh, road projects are set up with individual units of work. For example, the two minute mixture, uh, or paving, repaving the road is, is paid for by the ton at a unit price installed in the path. Uh, so we actually receive bill tickets from the contractor, we pay them for what they actually bring in. Uh, it's usually both of the estimated quantity, sometimes, you know, if, if you're an eighth inch thicker or an eighth inch thinner, it makes a difference of. Over running the quantity slightly or under run. So they get paid for the actual uh, the actual quantity involved. Uh, flatbed gravel, again, is by the ton. Concrete curb and gutter is by the linear foot.
Alright.
Uh, storm floor pipe is by the linear foot. Uh, there are other things that are by the square yard or by, by uh, uh, by the acre. So there are hundreds of bid items, uh, there's fifteen pages of bid items on this project to help. Um, and so again, the unit prices are fixed by the bid amount.
So that's, so I get it.
Yep.
It's the quantity was put down, my thought was by the foot, so they know, they know what they have to put down. So I thought probably by the foot of putting it down, but you're saying it's just the, the price of the co, of the tar, price of the concrete. But that walling could change.
Correct, so. Correct. We, we see slight adjustments or slight variation, uh, maybe they're five percent over, maybe they're five percent under. As a whole, that usually comes with pretty close to the actual bid amount, but it's not all, it, it's never exactly the bid amount.
Right.
Never ever seen that in, by twenty four years it looks.
Well, these contractors are usually pretty good at, I would assume what it's gonna take, but like you say, if it's an eighth inch odd, it's gonna head up over the footage.
Correct. An eighth inch odd over the, the footage on these roads will be, it'll probably be a, you know, ten or fifteen thousand dollar uh, difference on what the contractors paid overall. Again, that spread over, over all the, the project areas, um. And again, by, by them getting paid by the ton, that's how they buy the, the mix is by the ton. And so it reduces the amount of risk for them, and that's how we give the best, the most competitive they're spent.
Well, driveway, what's the plan with driveways? Are they gonna cut them back like they did in North of us? Or are they going to then replace that patch or, and Paul Barn, do they cut them back?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, hopefully the uh, driveways will all be cut back and replaced. Uh, they're not a set amount because it's based on uh, how much uh, distance it needed to make up the grade.
Okay.
Uh, we have certain criteria, but uh, normally what we try to do is match them both as best possible. Uh, so if you have a, a six percent driveway, uh, which is, you know, has a, will, will be a driveway with a slight incline. We wouldn't wanna match that distance or match that, you know, any grade difference in a very short area and make a steep comeback.
Right.
And so sometimes uh, in each driveway, it was reviewed or evaluated independent uh, and sometimes flat driveways. Uh, you know, so, so flat driveways are sometimes challenging because we have to drain it up the driveway. Sometimes we have to go back further on flat driveways, uh, to see the difference.
So next question is, um, if homeowners have, say, a bad section, like right up to where they're gonna cut it out. Is there a deal with, where they can deal with the contractor to get a bid on? You can probably get a decent price because they're there, put the concrete, live concrete driveway. I've got a couple of sections that I, when I replaced it twenty years ago, it was a bad pot load, so it's pitted out.
Okay.
So my thought, I mean, that section, will that be an opportunity for us to, to, to maybe have them do some of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we always ask the, the general contractor. Uh, beginning the projects with the interview, a lot of time the answer is no, because they don't want, because in order to do that, they have to go to each homeowner. Uh, and we're called an independent contract with each homeowner, and they just don't wanna do that. They're, they're skeptical of doing, you know, the, the bigger challenge jobs, okay?
One of the things in the past that we've seen is especially on the two minute driveways. This equipment they're doing to the roads is too big for the driveways. So most of the general contractors won't consider for two minutes because their equipment's not set up for driveways.
Right.
We, we have had some success, I mean, with the general wasn't kind. some success planning with the general wasn't concrete driveways to go back a little further. You know, we'll, we'll cover up to here as part of the project. Like you say, the next extension joint, you have some, some erosion in that part of the driveway. Sometimes they were able to work that out because, well, the concrete contractors are different than the, the two minutes. I've not seen any of our projects over two minutes will, will do, do work.
Right. I remember you ta- talking to you when they did that section, you walked around and like, hey, come on. Help the, help the, the homeowner out here, he's got another ten feet he needs replaced, and I remember that was kind of the big thing for you to go, go to bat with homeowners that time. So.
I mean, I, I worked pretty effectively when we, when we had everybody happy in that test.
Yeah. And then, uh, the last question was the stumps you were talking about, did they find? You know, did they do core samples to try to find them if they're in there, or did they find any?
Uh, yeah, we did do soil borings, uh, we were kind of concerned about, you know, generally the lower areas. We did not find, uh, any evidence of, uh, any corduroy set road sections uh, or underlying of deep soils. That doesn't mean that they're not out there, because when you think of it, you know, we did, I don't remember exactly the amount, six or, or eight uh, soil borings about this big a diameter. Now, that's only a small square footage of the overall road surface. And, you know, we've seen before where you were soil bored here, and soil bored here, and right in the middle, there's a bad spot or something that that we didn't anticipate. So it doesn't mean that it's not out there, but we didn't find it.
That said, you were looking based on what we've seen just in order to figure the most likely places for that, and that's why you selected the core sampling you did.
That's correct. Yeah, I looked at the curve, I was trying to watch from the best, you know, when it came off core sample, I mean, it's hard to really even see where they did it, but it didn't. For all the curve, and boy, didn't they sample that a little more? Go one way over here, one way over there, that stump is only just wide, so you could easily look at it.
Sure.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Bussel, and I live at one eight, one five Long Bayville. I have two gardens that are very close to the road. Am I going to get a notice from somebody that this much has to go, so I can take the place of it again, if I want to save it?
Uh, yes, we can, uh, before the project starts, we can state the construction limits for you.
Okay.
So that if you have, uh.
I think the one will be okay, it's got rock. The other one, it runs east west through.
Yeah, if it's within, you know, ten feet of the, for the curve of that, it's, it could be impacted by that.
But somebody will come and say, we better get rid of the, the, the water.
So.
We'll need to take the debris out, this is all I've set up.
So a lot of times what we do with landscape rock, unless you want to do something different, is we have the contractor to push it. You push it back, uh, so let's say you have a, a, a rock garden that's twenty feet.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we have to push ten feet, the first ten feet to the next ten feet, kind of on top of the old rock.
Um. That wouldn't work in our case, because if you push it back that far, it'd be in the next slot.
Okay. Well, the other thing you can do is remove it if you prefer that, uh, or, um, and so we'll, we'll send out a project notice. So after the bids are awarded, uh, after the contractor notified that they've been awarded the bid, and after they've had a chance to work on their schedule. Uh, then we have a pre-construction conference where we talk about schedules, uh, go over all that. And after that meeting, we send out a project notice to the residents, informing you when they told, when they tell us that they plan on starting. Uh, and we also include things like that, you know, if you have a garden, if you have an underground object, you have sprinklers in the road right away. Uh, all of those things, uh, we, we'll give you some, try to give you some notice to, to move a lot of the construction there. There's usually, or we provide a, uh, phone number for you to call, uh, and, uh, we'll come out and take a look at your individual situation. And try to make, you know, try to mitigate the impacts.
And Shane, don't you usually have a project representative to give the number to, so people who do have questions, they can
True.
directly with
That's correct.
With, uh, somebody who will actually be on site.
That's correct.
Jean Brosby, that one eight two four two Benning Street.
I forgot to hit you. Can I call your name again, ma'am, please?
Um, we need a water barrier at the top of our driveway. And you'll see that it's there now. And that has to stay there, otherwise all the water from, that's trying, you know, the development will. But that water is just staying. We also have a mailbox that cannot be removed. The, um, we can take off the arm that goes up with the mailbox on it, and that's four feet from the curb. If we have to remove the pole, it's going to be a major thing, because we put in the pole, we put in the mailbox. And then they went through and put in a gas line over the top of the cement. So you can't pull off the mailbox. They would actually have to have somebody out and cut it off. So I'm wondering if the four feet is enough or not.
Uh, four feet, uh, could be enough. Again, when we send the project notice, all you might need would give an idea for you to call, uh, the phone number. Uh, and we could come out, we could do it individually and look at your, uh, your mailbox. Um.
I actually made a drawing.
Okay.
Well, the four feet is, I would like to leave it there, because that's where my, my, my rain gauges. But, um, if we have to actually remove the entire, it would be quite a project.
Um, yeah, we'll have, we'll probably, it'll probably involve, uh, myself, uh, looking at it, and then also, uh, the city maintenance staff. Uh, one thing that, you know, we are a little bit concerned about is that there is a, uh, if we, we prefer to put in these swing away now blocks, which will be doing the building structure.
It does that, hold it up, hold it up, let's see.
Sure, okay.
Hi, my name's Mark Thomas, I live at one eight one zero seven Wakefield Drive. And at the last meeting, I remember you guys stating that I live on the low part of the road that sits really low. How much more are you guys going to raise it up, do you think? And I have two driveways that have been possibly affected. And what, two driveways? I have two driveways, we don't have Wakefield Drive. Yep. I'm just kind of curious, because you guys were saying the road is really low.
Yeah, we, we are raising it up.
Yeah, okay, so but how far up could we go? Maybe one feet to be going up inches. Uh, we're also going to put a culvert in somewhere around that side too, supposedly.
Yeah, so we cannot, uh, if, we cannot, if we raise the road high enough in order to put a culvert in underneath the road, we would, uh, we would have impacted your property too much. And so what the design calls for is a concrete spillway on the low side of the roadway. And the, at one station, we're raising the road, uh, six tenths of a foot, so seven or eight inches.
Could have brought my glasses, will be. Uh, so you're right here. Yeah, I'm on the solo side, there's one driveway here, and there's another driveway, that's one, but driveway, this one's not going to be affected then.
That one's not going to be affected, no, we're only raising. Yeah, and we're not raising the road there, we're only raising the road where it's really low by the way.
And where is this culvert going to win this?
There is no culvert, it's just going to be a concrete spillway.
Oh, okay, so but how are you going to keep the water coming across the road here, as we talked about before?
So we have a concrete cross gutter right here, so the water will follow that gutter and will follow down to the catch basin.
Uh.
Uh, but we are able to control that, you are still going to have from Wakefield Drive. Some of this comes this way and spill across the road.
Mm-hmm.
We cannot eliminate that, we're still raising the road even higher and cutting a bunch of trees.
I don't have water problems on this side. The only side it could work with, I took a picture of it, this side over here, the water crosses the road.
Okay.
Doesn't cross here, it crosses right here.
It is still super elevated, so a slope from the curb to the, to the low side like it does now.
Okay.
But it'll be, you know, slightly higher in elevation, and all of this water that's coming down, they go up the big hill.
Yep.
We're able to get that to go across and it's processed this concrete.
So there'll be a concrete in the middle of the target, so that's correct. Yep, what you see here in life is concrete. So how long is this product, I mean, how long is this going to last at best, when you get it taller all the time? How long is that concrete going to be able to stick with sand and plow all the time, and moisture getting underneath it, so? And what kind of warranties on this kind of product? We have a warranty of some sort that, uh?
Uh, we do have a warranty of one year from substantial completion. Uh, which is not probably the, the length or the timeframe that you're thinking of, but generally in concrete, we all live for paint. So, uh, in most cases, when we have concrete curb and gutter, uh, or, you know, cross gutters like this, we'll go in and replace, uh, the pavement twenty five or so years. Now, that's really destructive, but for the most part, uh, the concrete first takes.
And then the next question I have is, you're replacing all these culverts underneath the road that are there currently, or we install on top?
Two questions.
Uh, with what, tar, concrete?
Concrete.
Concrete, so they're going to be good for a long time then. And how big are they going to have, some kind of covering over them, so animals can't get in there? Make nests and stuff like that, like the beavers do already now?
They do, yep.
Yeah, so they're going to have all the covers.
It's, uh, who's going to eighteen now? I think a good example would be like right here, oh, a hundred or five, there's a couple of catch basins.
Hmm.
Uh, so it's the metal grid, you see on top.
Okay, because right now the one that's why he's talking about, doesn't have anything, keeping anything to move back up that thing.
Right.
So in this case, it's not going to be a culvert per se, the water's going to run down the concrete curbing.
Yep.
Into catch bases, so that's going to have the grade over it, with the small holes and the tight, light tires going through. And it's going to go down into the culvert, and there'll be a manhole in the middle of the road, they have to do get down there and clean out any winged settler in there.
Yeah.
Way to get through to that manhole to clean it out, so there won't be an opening per se for animals to get into.
Okay, because I know that north there, you guys have problems with the animals building nests inside these concrete things. Because I have a friend that lives up there, he says, yeah, build nests.
Must cry to the beavers, just love those things.
That's what I'm saying, so that's why I'm wondering, Thomas, is it going to work for us that have problems or go up there? Because you guys had to go back in there and re-dig it and put a bigger culvert.
Yeah, and that, that was a culvert without a grade on it like this.
Okay.
If you take a look right out here, I mean, there's, there's one that's actually in, right off of Bill's drive there. There's actually, um, one in the, it's not in the road, but it's in the ditch there.
Okay.
And that, I mean, the concept that they're talking about, it's more of a simplified. Close to. It's like, who's in?
Yeah, yeah, I get that, but then we're just going to flood it to the swamp then, right? Uh, sorry.
Yeah.
Swamp. Okay, and that's going to not prove anything, or? We got wells and stuff like that going in there.
Yeah, so, um, they're, I mean, it's the same water, same stormwater is going there now.
Right.
Right. Um, and there's, there's just not an opportunity to provide a stormwater con or something big, some big treatment area. Uh, because we're replicating, in order to, to do a, provide a stormwater con, we'd have to apply your easement from property owners. And that just apparently doesn't go over very well. Uh, as we mentioned in the public improvement hearing, uh, you know, any residents are interested. I mean, there is, uh, some cities that entertain like a rain garden or something off the back of her.
Yeah.
Where you can, uh, you know, have a, a small basin that, uh, does two things, that, that, uh, it allows the water and like the sand and, and, and our salt, uh, to collect in that basin. And as opposed to going into the wetland, we've got to make it a lake. Um, and it also kind of traps any dilute, so if there is a, a oil spill or, you know, even if it breaks us, uh, and includes stormwater. Uh, it tracks it in that basin instead of sending it downstream.
Okay.
So that is an option if people are interested. Uh, I don't think we have any rain gardens within the city of now, and so it'll be a new thing for the city to discuss. Uh, you know.
Because I know that hill gets a lot of salt in the winter time, that's going to run off someplace. Right, right now it's running into the, you know, the ditch, because that hill gets so slippery.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a state my problem, uh, the MPC has been doing, uh, studies for years now about the rising level of chlorides in our surface water, and just because, you know, we, uh, uh, it's kind of a conflict decision to prioritize safety, uh, but it does kind of a toss.
Okay, so my, my, I have two more questions, I'll be done. Uh, next question is now, how, you guys got a pause for bid, you picked the lowest one. That was the best option to pick the lowest.
We have no choice. State law mandates that we take the lowest responsible.
Now, how good a quality work do these people do?
We have no choice.
And when I, like, I go down the road, something goes, the road's getting messed up, and you guys are going to come back to us and say, oh, guess what? This contract we had five years ago screwed up. And now we're going to be reassessed to have it, it get fixed because they screwed up?
And no, I mean, that, that's a really valid point, and that's one of the reasons why, um, you know, so if you were a private business, you could, you could hire whoever you want and go with, uh, you know, what, what do you think is going to be the best policy? In government, uh, the attorneys have, we have to take the lowest bid.
Okay.
Uh, but that's why we have, I mean, I have a, a specification book that goes along with it, it's like six hundred pages thick. Uh, so we have, uh, project specifications for every unit of work. So for the gravel, if they, if they don't meet radiation, if they don't, uh, have the right moisture content when they're compacting. Or if they don't, uh, meet the compaction levels, there are, uh, there's already a standard method to deal with that, and they basically have to redo the work. Uh, for the paving, there are, uh, again, we take samples while the paving, test those individual samples, make sure that the mixture properties meet what's in the specifications, and we do a lot of testing during the project to make sure that at the end of the project, uh, it meets all the specifications.
Yeah, because like you said, the roads have been there thirty four years.
Right.
And they, I think, did really well themselves, other than now they're just more getting material.
Right.
As it come to the end, but how you think these roads were put in now, are going to last thirty four years?
I do, yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, we have specifications, and so, and although we don't have any control over the contractor, uh, you know, or their means or methods, we do have control over the end product that they're providing to us. And so if it doesn't meet specifications, we just say, hey, if it doesn't meet specifications, we're not paying for that work. And then even above that, if they refuse to correct it, uh, we have what's called a performance bond. And there's a couple of, uh, procedures that we have to go through to act on that bond. But basically, we have a financial security, if they fail to complete their work, that we can correct it, uh, that, that they're, uh, lending institutions top, so basically under threat. Uh, so we do have a means and methods if there's, if there's an issue with the contract. And it does happen occasionally, so not like it never happens, it's happened.
I get it.
Right.
I get it.
Um, but we do have a way to deal with that, should it happen.
And we have done, and I, I represent a lot of different communities and towns with all I do. And I have had situations like William Janera and Lunge stated that there, something went wrong. And it's called a, uh, performance bond, and we give them notice, give them an opportunity to cure if they want, otherwise we go to the bond company and say, you have to do this work yourself to our specifications, or you give us the money to do it ourselves. So again, there are these checks and balances, but it's very rare. I've only done it, I've been doing this for thirty, forty years, and I've only done it once or twice.
Right, and this, this contractor is a reputable contractor, it's a contractor that I've worked with on projects in the past. And they've done a, 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 a good job. Uh, I mean, they, one of the projects was East Angers and Milka, which is a, a pretty large project, way larger than this. Uh, and that project turned out very good. So, uh, they, they have done performance tests, and they have a, a strong track record. But the, the contractor that I'm more concerned about are the ones that pop up overnight. Uh, and last week they were doing, uh, the driveway paving, and now they want to do a, a road project.
Right.
Uh, and those are a little bit more risk, but we still have little protections, uh, that we go into the balance.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Hannah Thomas, I live at one eight one zero seven Wakefield Drive in Northwest. So, I noticed, I've been driving around, I've been looking at neighborhoods around us, because you know, want to be a standout neighborhood more than we already are. Um, but I noticed that the road.
Um, but I noticed that the road got, and I know they are in Andover, but off of Seventh Avenue at a hundred and seven, hundred and seventeenth avenue northwest. I don't know if you guys know what that neighborhood is in Andover. It's where the new construction is going in, in those cornfields. It's across from there. They got those roads done about five years ago, I believe, and they don't have concrete curving. And honestly, the look of concrete curving just doesn't go with the whole aesthetic of where we live. Concrete curving is for Maple Grove or I know that or anywhere else. I just don't understand why the whole concrete thing has to be so forced when whatever, the, the tar curving has worked so well and it's working in now newer neighbors just as well. So, and they don't have ditches or anything like that.
Check if there's pictures of them.
Yo.
They don't have no ditches.
Someone I can't think of an idea that works just like that. Could you guys, you know, share some plans? Be like, hey, look.
Yeah. I actually live in Andover, uh, I'm honestly, but um, and I know that a lot of their old roads were built with a two man's curb. Uh, and their new roads, I, I know for a fact they use concrete curb and gutter. So they might've done uh, you know, an overlay project or they might've done some work. Uh, I'm sure they have done work in a lot of their neighborhoods. Uh, left the Batumus curb there. Um, when they do it, an overlay or something like that, but um, the concrete curb does add to the life of the road. So um, there is a benefit.
My, my mom lived in Maple Grove. She's got a concrete curving. And less than a year it cracked.
Sure. This is, this is a kind of a storm shoulder.
And chunks were rolling on. Everyone loves those chunks of concrete everywhere, don't they?
So, so we also have a very similar uh, roadway to that. Uh, if you go up by here and uh, would have been to east, east and west Garnett Street.
Yep.
Uh, and I don't know how many times we patched the big curve there because uh, you know, sometimes they just snow falling or whatnot. Uh, we lose a bit curve. So right now we're between this curb has, you know, thirty years of, of grass rip mat over it. Kind of providing that uh, some shouldering, I guess.
Perfect. Nature. Do you mean what it does best?
Right.
Nature creates all the best things. I don't, I mean, humans can't compete. So why not leave nature where it's supposed to be?
Right. Well, in order to.
Are you, when you guys were doing the construction, are you guys gonna clean up all your garbage? Cause there's plenty of garbage already that we don't need anymore in the neighborhood. It's sad. Like more people have been coming in. Your construction workers left garbage behind in my yard. Like we don't need any more garbage. We don't need all this pollution coming in just for bunsies. Cause you guys wanna do a road project. Like it would be great if we just leave the neighborhood somewhat as it is instead of putting all these modern things constantly. I'm part of the modern generation. I don't even wanna be part of it. I would rather go back sixty years and enjoy that time versus now. I'm just saying, I'd rather be your resident agent. I'm waking up and paying and mulling too, just like you guys. But it's just, I get the concrete curving is probably the best idea, but it's just, as one of the few young people in this room, um, it just, why not leave the whole like almost antiquey vibe.
Yeah, like country feeling.
Yeah. Like these concrete curves, if you wanna go see concrete curves, go to Maple Grove. Rusty, exactly. Like, I want less people that are coming into the sub, like the city people are coming out more to the country and they're changing it more. I said, no, no, no. If you wanna stay in the city, stay in the city. There's no need to keep putting all these extras when it's worked for how many years? Just fine.
Sure. And I understand that um, a, a few things to, to keep in mind is, um, you know, back in the, back in the day, our uh, all of our products that we use were less environmental friendly. Uh, the, the driveway vehicle that we use, the, even the Batumus mixture had more oil in it. Oil wasn't as expensive as it is now. Uh, so our, our materials today aren't the same as they used to be, uh, which could affect longevity. So I realize it's a track record of thirty three years, um, but we're not using those same materials back then as we do now. Some of those materials have been banned because they, they have a lot of carcinogens.
I see.
Uh, and um, we're just trying to do the, the lefty candy of materials that we have now. Uh, the other thing is just destructibility issue. And that is when we use concrete curb and gutters, we actually use a straight line to set the line and grade of those. That's why I want more control over uh, slopes. So we have some slopes out here that are minimum grade, which is like point five percent. Uh, and generally two percent is considered a kind of a minimum slope. Uh, and so with the concrete. Yeah. I mean, what, 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 if we were to use the, the Batumus curves, you're likely to have more bird mouth or larger bird mouths uh, than where the concrete curb and gutter, which they're not able to use that straight line.
No, I don't want to go back to that. No, I don't want to go back to, I have two, two nights of cars to have to.
Eric, who is on?
Are you done?
But I, I potentially, hopefully that we can avoid concrete curse. That's all.
Elsie White, forty nine eighty, one hundred and eighty second lane. I'm here representing Joan Parks in Precision Sawing. I'm a little confused about what he said about appealing the settlement. Um, when I got the letters, cause we didn't get one from last year. When I got the letter, I immediately called him about that we're being charged twice. So is my letter too late?
If you wish to object, you have to file a formal objection before the close of this public hearing. And if you do not object before the close of this public hearing, you basically, according to state law, you need your right to object. In other words, when you go, this is the first step in going to court. Because if you object to the proposed assessment amount, you will file an objection here tonight before the close of this public hearing. And then if you wish to formally oppose the assessment amount, go into court and fight it. Then the court is gonna ask, city, you have to provide, you add the city to give you a copy of that assessment, that, uh, uh, a statement of opposition, uh, or an objection, it, it gets attached to your complaint, what you file in court. That shows the court that you actually have done this first required step. Then you go into court, pay the court filing fees, you pay the service calls, get it served on the city, and then the city will uh, go into court with you and then ultimately you go to trial on whether your property benefited by the amount of the assessment. If the court finds that your property did benefit by the amount of the assessment, then they, they, and the assessment is assumed to be correct. You have the burden of proof to show that it's not correct. And then, once that's done, then if the court says, no, you didn't, the city didn't, uh, you, you proved your case and your property didn't benefit, you don't get out of the assessment. The court will just lower it. Uh, there was one project, uh, probably ten years ago that, on another community that engineer Nelson and I both worked on. They opposed it. The ci, the, the city, uh, they, it was a twelve thousand dollar assessment. The city agreed to settle the matter by reducing the amount of the assessment by three thousand dollars. So just to avoid the time and expense of a trial. And in that case, the property owners who later became elected officials told me that they, two of them, they, they said that they spent more money on the attorney fighting it than they would have if they had paid the assessment. They lost money. But that's the process. It's not something that you, you oppose it tonight, say, I object as a property owner. You submit it to, to the mayor, the mayor has it on the files, and then that just reserves a right. You still have to go and follow the statutory rules to actually file or to uh, to actually fight the assessment amount.
So why don't I do the other part?
I'm not gonna advise you. Again, I'm the city's lawyer. I'm, I can advise you, you need to file the objection tonight. And I, I, I can advise you about how to proceed. I, I don't need to hire your own lawyer.
Yeah. It's not so much of holding the assessment. It's that we're being charged twice because we have two property IDs. One really is one property and the city or county changed it sometime. Like I said, it after nineteen ninety. So we.
Question you have.
Seventeen thousand dollars, four hundred dollars.
Yeah. So the, the question you have is it, is it necessary to double charge if there's only one driveway? At some point, it was originally one pin number changed to two pin numbers in the nineties. And that was the question we had early on. Cause this is the only situation where there's one owner with two pin numbers. And what people have done in the past is they combine their pin numbers back to the.
Well, I talked to uh, Cindy and she says you, you're, there's really no options because one, it's so in business or commercial so that we can be charged the excessive amount of property packs on that one ID. And then she said that to even even get to that point, there had to be like so many upgrades to the properties, which I don't quite understand that. To like, um, get it into what it would be considered updated as of this year, like currently it's been the seventies.
Generally with this Nash, I'm assuming Cindy Nash.
Yes.
Uh, I wouldn't, the city planner was telling you was, is correct. Generally, assessments for commercial or industrial properties are much higher than residential because the benefit is more. And in, in, in this case, the council is treating you, your properties, just as if they are the other residential properties. That's to your benefit. But as something if you challenge the assessment, you'll need to understand that my job is to show the total benefit. And I will show that based on using an appraiser of what a, a commercial industrial property value would be. And in terms of combining your lots or not combining your lots, that's something that you're gonna have to decide on your own what you wanna do. But the, the question also is even if you combine it, under Minnesota law, I can argue that you may still benefit because that property can be divided and can be developed. So if you have like a forty acre parcel and then you have five acre lots, technically the city can treat each lot, each five acre lot and assess people for those potential benefits because you could subdivide it tomorrow. And so it's a lot of things that you're gonna need to talk to your attorney about and decide what you wanna do.
But it started as one property.
I understand. And not most properties do, but people subdivide, people combine, people do.
But it wasn't our choice to do it.
Yeah. Cause I got asked a question. Uh, when, when this first came up, because there was a question with the trucks coming out of Precision Sawing. And uh, we went back to see what the C U P was on there. So there is a conditional use permit on this. I don't understand any other conditional use permit on residential property. The assessor says X amount of this is being used commercially, X amount is being used residentially. Or, or Y amount is being used residentially. The residential, the Y part gets this tax rate and the commercial portion gets this tax rate. So somebody recently was in concern that they have a barn and the only portion of the barn is being used commercially, but the assessor assessed the whole barns being used commercially. So we had that straightened out saying X percentage is commercial, X percentage is residential. So I don't understand the question of this Nash is if we have a C U P on this, it's not a commercial zone. It's a commercial use in a residential zone. Cause that's why we were told we couldn't do any extra assessment on this property because it is a permitted use in a residential zone. No. No, it's not. The zoning of itself, in and of itself, it has a conditional use permit. It is being used in a commercial or industrial type of nature. And that is the question is what's the, then that runs with the land. So anybody that buys that land would also have the ability to use that unless the people violate the conditions and the city council goes and formally goes through the process to revoke. So that is, I'm not sure, nobody can talk to me about, I mean, I know I've been gone the last week or so because of uh, family issues, but that, you know, the law on this is generally is that you look to the use of the property, you look to the zoning, you look to what uses under that zoning. But if this has a use that is grandfathered in, cause it has a C U P, it immediately is now, it was there before and now this is a residential. It still doesn't change the fact that that's a use of the property. The purpose is to determine what the benefit that property is by the side of the road project. But, but the use of the property was originally residential. And they, we have a C U P that runs a business.
This came first?
Yeah. And then they built the house in seventy four. It actually started in Dean's house.
Right?
Yeah. And then my grandma sold the five acres to the Sodendys.
Oh, no.
To the, to the. Yeah, but we're nailed down. Yes.
So, so I have no question. So my property, for instance, when I moved in, I did not know it had anything on it. And it did. And I got a thing from the state and I was like, what is this about? At that point, I was able to go to the city and take that off my property. Because I didn't, I wasn't using it. So therefore I was able to just take it off the property. And my, um, I am not, I am just considered non- residential. So what I'm saying is what, what is stuck in them? Why can't we do the same thing?
Which you have to come in and actually formally request that the city revoke the C U P. My understanding is that they are using that C U P. So that is the difference. You weren't using it. You asked the city to formally ex, you know, quote through the process to revoke it. Therefore, it no longer applies to your property. And you wouldn't be able to get it now because it's changed its zoning. So that's, you would have, you were probably grandfathered in on that. And the government recognized that. You went and formally requested that that be removed. And you can't put it back again. Government would now take that into consideration. In this matter, the property is being used for some sort of, you know, precision saw, you know, and so therefore without that conditional use permit, they would now be able to operate. So we're still using it. They're still using it. There's the difference. And that's why I'm saying that even if you objected to the assessment, I would have to point out to the court that in fact, the assessment amount was lowered, it's based on a particular residential parcel. And yet these properties by, by the C U P have the right to be commercial industrial and are commercial industrial in use.
Okay.
Yeah. But what about the home being also charged?
Which are being charged.
Seven hundred dollars. The house being charged eighty seven hundred dollars.
And your vote, both are benefit.
All right. And then the other thing, um, when you mentioned that there's gonna be concrete curbs, we have a uh, gravel driveway. So how does that work? And then how does that work with our trucks? Are we shut down for three days? My, how do we get to the house? How does my grandma and her significant other get from the top of the driveway all the way up to the house when she's eighty seven and can barely walk? So. Uh, plus her also.
Yeah. So there, I mean, there are gonna be some minor inconveniences with this property. We just can't do this amount of work with all kinds of inconveniences. Um, we could, we could try to talk to the contractor. I know the driveway is pretty wide.
It's wide and long.
Right.
To get from, if you're on a hundred and eighty second and you wanna get up to the house.
Hmm.
And it's not just like walking a few feet to your garage door. And you go all the way down the hill and you hit the shop first. And then you go all the way back up the hill to the house.
Sure. Um, yeah. So we, we could, we would try to learn with you to figure something out uh, that allows you to get access. We've done uh, we've done other kind of free of things in the lab, uh, particularly for like elderly person or disabled. Uh, you know, it could be something like, you know, somebody has a, a side by side. And they run back and forth through the house, you know, once or twice a day, if you're not coming in at all, constantly throughout the day. But there will be a period of time where disrupt concrete, you can't drive through a side by side.
And so on top of being charged seventeen thousand, that it's gonna be shut down for three days?
We could look at, we could talk to the contractor about, um, coming back and doing the concrete, do most of the concrete, come back and do, leaving a portion open and come back to do another portion. There are options that we could consider. Uh, the contractor is likely gonna line up, do it all at once. Uh, so it's a conversation. I will have to help them and come up with the best plan for.
How does the concrete butt up to a gravel? Everyone else, you know, has car. How does that work?
Yeah. They just gravel behind the concrete.
And then our mailbox is not at the top of the driveway. It's down the hill. So then you put and for everyone at the top. And for everyone at the top or?
Uh here mailbox doesn't interfere with the work. It would not be.
Well, then we want to get mail. Would she walk it down?
Uh so we do know that on the post office. Well, they are aware, but um uh you know, some, some people will choose to have their mail held at the post office. Pick up at the post office. Uh is there our option? We could install a temporary mailbox uh for you if that's what you prefer.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So with the two properties split, I'm sorry, I still wanna understand something here. With the two property split, when, again, I'm going back to the road project that I had on my road. My neighbor was able to put his kid, two IDs, he was able to put it back to just one. So why is it that they couldn't just put it back? One, is it because one of the.
Get their money for commercial tax. So that's why they.
Well, they, but again, where we have commercial businesses operating on homes, they still get their commercial tax. They'd say this much of your property is in use commercial.
So do we find out why they were forced into two addresses and two property IDs to begin with?
To without speaking to the county and finding out, a lot of counties say that they have a policy. And they will say strictly enforce it. That if, say, somebody buys two pieces of property, they're both in the same person's name, they legally force the combination. So it may have happened something as simple as that. So as a lawyer, if I was gonna buy, if I have one piece of property here and I'm gonna buy the next piece of property and I wanna keep them separate, I would buy this in my name, buy this in an LLC or, you know, some other corporate name so that somebody, I still own it, you know, but one's in a corporation name and this one maybe in my third. So the county would be, we'd have to contact the county and find out why the county said it to her that she could not.
So it wasn't the property, because in the letter here that I see, it says city or county that they don't know for sure.
I was too young and my grandma doesn't.
If anything, the city has encouraged people to combine any of these not separate. I don't know if ever.
So that's my question.
Remember separating.
And I don't, and the question is how it happened in the past. The question is, can it be uh separated or or combined now? And I don't know the answer because we haven't talked to the county. I was the first time hearing about this. But it's not about how did it happen thirty, forty, fifty years ago. It's only question now is, could it be combined together now on that? And then the question is, then if it is combined, the question is for the council, do you instruct me as your attorney to treat it as one property? Or do we can say with the two, because technically under law, you could. One's got a residential, one has commercial industrial, you look at the highest and best use, and you could say, no, that property could be split. And so we're gonna keep treating it as such. Every, every community that I represent has different policies on that. So it's up to you guys to make that call. But right now, there are two separate PID numbers. And you guys have been doing your assessments based on per parcel. And you are treating her commercial piece or industrial piece all open as residential. You're giving her, because typically that would be, it would be double. You know, the amount of the assessment for a residential because of the use and benefit that that would have for that business.
Mr. Mayor. Congressman Brian, a question for attorney, so let's hypothetically say right now there's a residential, a commercial. Even though it's residential, this one has a CUP on it. If they do combine one, does that CUP become an essence? Someone board would have to be re-done because it's a totally different parcel?
No, I don't think a board would look at it because you changed the PID number. I think they would look at it as the land, and the land was originally legally described. So when the CUP was issued, the CUP would have had a legal description for that portion of the land that it applied to. And that land would still arguably have that CUP unless it goes, the city goes through the formal relocation process.
Great.
That's my final.
The reason I'm questioning this particular property is when I look at it on the map, there is only one way into the property. And there is only one driveway and the rest goes through wetlands. So that's another thing when I'm looking at it. Have it split into two parcels. There's no way on that second parcel that there'd have to be an easement, which I believe there might have been on it, I think, through the whole thing. Um then you'd have to have an easement on the property to be able to use on the driveway, to be able to use it. So that's another thing that I'm.
Well, this isn't necessary because there's a lot of parcels in Minnesota that are quote landlocked. And you can create a landlocked piece by like splitting off your back forty. And you created a landlot. And that's why they have a thing called a cartway. And you can apply for it under Minnesota law. If you are otherwise landlocked, you have no access to a public road other than the, over the land of somebody else. Even if you created it yourself by your splitting off of your property, if you meet the statutory requirements, the government is required. You pay for that whole process and it's expensive, but there is a process to deal with that. It doesn't automatically change your PID number or stuff, but people, somebody in the past who's split lots and created something landlocked, maybe they needed it at the time, but now they're going to sell it. And now somebody would be landlocked, now they come back to the government and say, hey, we want a cartway. If they meet their requirements, we have to go through that process to give it to them. So it's not an absolute, that doesn't actually deal with.
Okay.
With the PID numbers and whether it's parcel, that deals with access. And there can't, there are many times in Minnesota law where you don't meet the requirements and you are just landlocked.
Okay.
Welcome to my world. It's fun, you know? But it's, it is something, I don't know if this property could be combined presently. That would be a simple question for the uh the county, the auditor's office, Mr. Mayor.
Then if if and when the project begins, when would we find out, you know, who would contact us about being able to get in and out and it trucks and?
A a mail notice sent to each property.
And we'll say when, as you said, that, you know, they will talk with us.
Then we'll mail them. We can be property will have kind of a general outline of the the schedule that we're told by the contractor. And then we'll have a full number for you to call, the topic of all, special circumstances, the special considerations.
Okay, is that the contractor or the city?
Uh that's a representative of my.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So is somebody gonna contact the county to see if we've prepped this thing we combined? But what was Cindy's conversation on this? And I thought that's why we talked about this months ago, is was any, and there's any possibilities to the combined before we put out the assessment. Figures.
Mr. Mayor. Not that we had a responsibility of the homeowner and.
We're the ones that approached them about the CUP. This just came out ten meetings nights, so.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, my understanding that if we're referring to the same conversation was as we were asking, you know, to see the CUP. And the business was still operating uh with the same credentials as the CUP. I have never recall being asked to consider any marketing in conversation, whether the homeowner decided they wanted to do something themselves and they were pregnant and calling. But we never did any work on approaching the homeowner much, I mean, if you had any.
My understanding, we just talked about changes. And that was it. Another case of where that is where life on, or liking, when people understood. I I combine my PIDs and then I don't have to pay twice for opening PIDs ahead. Not our obligation to do that. But since we were asking about CUP, what did, why does Cindy say these can't be combined?
So my understanding when Cindy uh called me today after she talked to Chelsea is that there need to be, there would have to be survey, things would have to be looked into. She was in the detective, it was a rookie. Um but she also stated that she shared with Chelsea that to go through that process and get that all done um would probably most likely outweigh the assessment fee that. And I think Chelsea is that what she shared, yeah.
Just to put them back together?
To go through the process potentially. And I think part of the process is what our attorney was just referring to, if we were going to.
To to put them back together under one.
Yeah, the question was, is that Chelsea had was, is there, and what is the process? If we try to put on the one PID? So that's how it was presented this.
And we talked about the one driveway and we talked all the things that Chelsea did. So a good job of explaining right there. Those are all the things that's reduced scope of something. Yeah, so I can get that all of the.
One more question. Mark Thomas, five one zero seven Michael Drive. On your map, it only shows nine one drive. The other driveway has also an mountain. So how far up the hill are you guys going? What's that? Is your map only shows nine one driveway?
A focal sheep.
I don't think you're looking at the. But wait, you have the whole property's a map that she could. Cause the hills, I have part of my properties in Ramsey, majority of it's in Alman. I pay taxes in most cities. First, yeah, you need it because you're lying. Right, right. I thought of the problem. I don't have any of this.
So, does it say?
Yes, it's fifty eight and that's fifty nine. Correct.
Oh, so that's your one driver there before the person.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So you have, so you, where is it at? Where is the cut? It's just my nearest town. So this is the cutoff right here is where you guys are gonna be cutting off at the top of the hill, is what you're saying?
No, the road continues to go at the right.
Yeah, I get that. So where is your cutoff on this? Is that where it's right there?
No, no, it's, the road continues, but we're not grading.
I understand. So you have my same, it's gonna cut off the top of the hill. It's there, you have to take off there. So this is the top of the hill or?
Oh, yeah, 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 right there, right there, but.
Yeah, yeah, I've been probably doing all this, so. So I know the driveway is.
For the asphalt, one eight, one five, one, one street. How much extra is uh concrete serving better? That's so.
Uh I don't have that exact figure. Uh with me, I mean, there is a increase for um concrete curving gutter as opposed of a tubular curb. But that also, uh there's a decrease in the amount of that concrete curving gutter is twenty eight inches wide versus, but then curb is constructed on top of the tubular. So if not, I just compare one, one unit price to the other.
And Joe, that's pretty good. It'll be forty years. Probably be, yeah. Things can get up long before that, the city water, the sewer, the shit.
Oh, I, I don't expect that to happen.
Oh.
That's not in any of our comprehensive plans. So the surgery department now is seriously a lot.
Mistakes you got inside the.
Mistake the what?
Mistake that you gotta, that's where the road's going in there.
No, uh the only thing that should be in the ground at this point are control points. And those are the uh. So our surveyors use kind of a GPS positioning system and a series of of benchmarks for X, Y, and Z uh for our coordinates. And those are kind of points that we check into every time we go to the site to make sure that GPS coordinates are reading from satellites. Uh to make sure that there's nothing, uh no error, if something's moving a lot, so. I'm really checking.
Is the road gonna be wider than this?
Same look.
Same way. So you shouldn't have to bring up in the driveway.
Uh there always is some driveway patching associated with that.
Okay.
Or maybe could you address, uh you came up to me before the meeting and kind of briefly told me about that's uh the culvert.
Oh, yeah.
Can you just uh briefly share what you remember, what you're recollect about that meeting at all?
We put that in about eighty four. Myself and my neighbors.
Okay.
Got uh stayed high relative to the script, but.
Okay.
And I think the town should probably, the town should get, probably put in the culvert in the street.
Okay.
And uh right, right south of that culvert, there's a low spot in there. Uh at the time when we had the high water, the lake level was fifty inches higher than the hole that was set down. And I believe there's a spring or three, two there. Because it was wet a lot of times, but it shouldn't be. And same way down in the curb, do it once.
Okay.
It's wet to there. Been doing that for fifty something. So no matter what you do, you're gonna have.
Sure, and that pipe goes all the way from the wetland on the left side of the road, through your yard uh and then until Robert's Lake. And there's another, you see the 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 pipe on the Robert's Lakeside or that's submerged under the water?
No, no, it's not.
Above the water, okay.
Water's pretty low.
Okay. Would you mind if I stopped over your property? You had someone stop also to take a look and try to get a location on that other end?
Well, it might be a slight chance.
So Shane, we're starting uh construction on our Comcast project here. And we have talked about making sure that your project manager and Comcast project manager were coordinated. And they said, we're doing street work before we're doing a planning. Was anybody notified of that yet? Have they contacted you?
I did have a brief conversation with uh gentleman Comcast. Uh he did not talk specifically about uh these roads. Uh his questions were more in general about right away permanent requirements, uh whether or not we have planned right away or uh the use of maintenance roles uh within the city. And I had to kind of give them a brief education on what use of maintenance. Uh me, uh he, like all utility owners, uh didn't understand that. Uh asked me to to provide them with a right of way for our city roads. The format, I can't do that because we don't know. It's not combined by nature of the season, so. Um so yeah, I have had a conversation with him about this project specifically.
So that's somebody you can contact, make sure that if they're gonna be doing any, any running under roads, we do that before the two miss them down.
Comcast sold all that far. Might be second to last on Comcast's line.
They're bringing it in.
Bringing it in.
Oh, could you guys, I'm already on it, too. I don't know. Exactly. So Mr. Mayor, they'll be invited to the previous.
Are they gonna jiggy them? I understand there'll be a pole line, so probably putting a wire on the pole line pole. Or are they gonna go from the hole underground to the house?
That's my understanding. We're waiting for the last reports from the construction engineers on this project. Wherever they could use poles, they're gonna use poles that come from the house. I would suspect the pipe is gonna run underground.
My understanding, they don't have permission from uh the electric ability to use their poles yet. Um so that's their, their plan and that's their least possible for a alternative. But they still have a couple of hurdles to jump over across before.
Anybody else wish to speak in public? We're all good. Cindy here. Shane, Bob, anything else?
No.
Uh so, Mr. Mayor, the, with the public hearing portion of the meeting is over. I think the, the next action we did. I think the, the next action we did close the public hearing, uh, and then you also have a resolution for considerations that I have done.
Now, while you're making your motion to close the public hearing, I'll pass this out to the council. Council, anything else, like, was public game?
I'm just wondering if a lever that we would say from Ms. Hart serves as her official notification, or if she had to be subject of her.
Actually, um, Bob, that's a question for you, but this does not challenge the, uh, does not meet criteria for challenging the project.
If this part wishes to object, I would ask that she take her written comments and actually say, I object on it, so it's very clear for a court. If you don't wish to do that, that's up to you, but that, again, that if you do it, it doesn't automatically, uh, appeal the assessment amount, you still have to go through that whole step, that is a precursor to, to preserve your rights, and you have to do it now.
Does the property owner have to do it?
I would, if, are you an agent for the property owner, or?
I'm their granddaughter.
That I would accept that, you know? I'm glad.
With her making a move, if she were to do that tonight, can she withdraw that later if they decide?
No, if, if, if she would submit it, and then she'd allow the assessment to go forward, she may talk to a lawyer, find out what this would all cost to oppose it, because you, typically, you'd need a lawyer, you have the cost of filing the, you know, fees for filing anything in court, you have service costs from serving the city with the documents, there is appraisal cost, because you have to have an expert, some, you know, to testify in court plus permit cost, so it's it, it, it's something that if this preserves a person's right, but doesn't obligate them to actually follow through and file a court.
Counselor Brad.
Question, does the, does the resolution include just now, like, shouldn't the resolution just now?
Because this is, they are asking us for our, our usually joint. Well, before we get to this, let's make, do you wish to formally?
Yeah.
Then please come up and just write on the form, you know, that you, we, the property owners, if decision saw formally object to the assessment, just something as simple as that, on that same, you can use that same form that you.
Just don't be bad if you want.
Yeah, um.
I don't have much time.
No, just right. Yes, we object to these proposed assessments. Yeah, just sign it in that. It's just in twenty, I mean, the city, what it's supposed to be, is putting the city on notice that you object. So the city now discussed that, what the public hearing disclosed, but we even do this project. As I am lying, and he said, if anybody objects, we're not paying a lawyer to defend us, we cannot do this project. And that's a, that's why the state government sent this state statute saying, oh, you think the city might know if anybody preserves the rights, so you can decide whether you, the city or not.
Well, not only, I mean, all the figures would take us out, but most likely, but not in that, oh, we're just pretty much in jumping, being charged double.
You can just, you just need to write if you're, then you, if you, if whatever the city does, then once you get your assessment, you preserved your rights, then you have to. And under the law, the assessment that the city passes, whatever form we found, hopefully we can be declared with is presumed to be valid, and it's your burden as the property owner to rebut that presumption by showing, knowing your property didn't benefit by the amount that was assessed.
So. Just kind of go through and then object at some point with a lawyer, whatever it is, to, you may charge double.
Wait for your assessment.
You have to wait for your assessment, although, so I'm the assets. You got city, library, connection is to be charged all the property.
Me, either number is gonna be financial for anonymous, but you pay seventeen thousand four hundred on top of the thirteen thousand we already pay in property tax, and that's just gonna go up and up each year, and that's an extra, just seventeen hundred without interest. So how, I mean, our house is down, the business is down, I mean, there's just no way we can, I mean, we're, we're just COVID, the economy, we're just barely making it, so.
But I'm understanding that, if there were, it's gonna be a difficult thing either way, but if it was one assessment versus two.
Would be easier than to try to come up with seventeen thousand dollars. But yes, I object to kind of all, but we mainly object to being charged double.
So that was the problem we had with the drivers living north, one resident objected, it was going to kill the whole project. If they were successful in doing it. And is that what this whole project did this?
No, if it's only, if, if nobody else objects, their assessments are gonna go forward. The only one that we would go into court with potentially is, is these property owners, and at that one time, it's, you know, ultimately, the trial, the judge will make the decision in that property benefit by the amount of the assessment. And my belief is that, yes, the assessments, because most assessments that we see in this day and age, much larger, they're in the ten, twelve, fourteen thousand dollar range. And yours is a commercial property, but, you know, and you're using it for it, you have a C and P, and you're using it, it's gonna be hard, I think, to.
Yeah, the business owns, the business can take the eighty seven million dollars, but why does the house have to also?
See, because it's a house, and it's benefiting, it's no different than everybody else's property. Everybody else has a house, they are paying that same assessment.
But the business and the house are one benefiting from the same property. We did not go ahead and say, hey, we need two addresses, we need two property IDs, we, it wasn't on us that did that, so.
I'm glad.
Anyway. I will call a county and talk to a county and see what they have to say about this, because you, you need to go back and see what did happen. I would suggest you do that and find out why, because you don't know why at this point. And maybe at that point, it was a mistake and that the county did, and they, or they can't find something, or you just don't know until you, to you, so I would suggest you do that, it was called the county, seemed to be done well. Where does that stop?
Like, I've talked to property tax people, or?
Um, the city's office, um.
You explain your situation, ask for them to guide you, who you should talk to. Oh, that would be the best thing, because you're probably gonna call a general number, then you explain your situation, the person who answered the phone, because I do this when I call, I explain who I am, what I need, but they direct me, to believe was the best person, and sometimes I think it's you know, with the, you know, different parties, and they're not the answer, that's why.
But the thing is, this, you're saying city or county, we don't know, because it was far back, so if you go to the county first, you know, they might call.
Yeah.
Say, hey, you have these records on there, and we're.
So the question you really have is can the two property? And they, they may be lost in history, probably have, but maybe, but you explain, I have two property numbers, and when I invite them to combine the numbers. That's, that's what you can do with it.
Really honest, it does not matter how it happened in the past, you are in this situation now, what you are asking is can they even go on, and then you are asking, will the city council modify the assessment amount if I am successful in combining my problem? But those are the two, and I can't answer those for either hill, that's a council decision, and it's with the counties.
This makes.
That's my final.
I'm based on tonight's vote that we do, Shane had said that the units can't be changed once we do that. So that.
No, these units.
Oh, those units, okay.
All right, that's.
Instead of dividing by eighteen, we divide by seventeen. So prices, so the, so the, the assessment amount would change accordingly, whatever.
So what does that do, Shane, if, if these last were assessed that you might even want?
Uh, we expect the eighty seven?
So the eighty seven cannot go up. Uh, the other thing that does is it takes that, uh, that fixed cost, the cost for fifty percent of the surface improvements, and experience that, uh, against a smaller number of persons. So in essence, the subsumal, uh, for the other properties increases five hundred bucks.
Well, that's not fair either.
It's, it's the, it's a certain cost divided by the benefiting property, so the benefiting property, the number of benefiting property decreases, um, then that affects the assessment amount. The council now does have, you know, discretion to, uh, look at special circumstances and, and determine uh, if there's, uh, some other method that's warranted, or you wanna look at something else, but generally, that's what happens, less properties, uh, equals.
So is it legal to bankrupt somebody and have them move out of their house and lose their business for, before this? Question. Since it is seventeen grand, I don't see how we survive. I mean, it's just that.
Uh, one other thing just to consider is that once you, if you go down the road of combining the properties, then that's it, they're combined, and if you ever desire to, say, sell them, they must pop separately uh, in the future, you will not be able to do that, because they're now one, one person, so just keep that in mind, in order to subdivide, you have to go through and meet all the city's subdivision requirements.
Well, you really can't sell one property without the other, everything is intertwined. Sprayer system, I mean, everything, it's just it's all one. So I don't even know how either or would even sell off one part.
Sure.
You know, if the bank wanted to sell the business, how? I don't, I don't see how they would.
So, and then the business could only be purchased by somebody else and use that same C and P, if they were doing the same in the same conditions of the original C and P. I mean, they could, they could mind business and do something else.
But it is about, uh, I remember, we're not ready, but a few acres of size, right, maybe four acres or something.
The business is on less than three, it's like two point five or eight.
Okay.
And the remainder was.
The house, twenty two point five, give or take?
You guys got something to share with all of us? Well, that would get it for all of us, honestly. Uh, the CUP, I don't think can operate without a home unless it's.
I mean, I know I. It depends on the condition.
It saves property.
It saves the property, and it's after that CUP, or I, IUP and a CUP are basically the exact same thing, the only difference between the two is IUP can have a, a specific termination year, a date certain, an advance, something like that, where a conditional use permit runs with the. Most things nowadays are running towards in, interuse permits temporarily, we'll give you a permit for this number of years or this event versus, we're giving you permission forever, as long as you don't violate the conditions. Usually CUPs are used for things that have a lot more infrastructure that's needed, you have to build a factory, you have to, you know, there's a lot more infrastructure and equipment and stuff in order to get that, and they wanna make sure they can keep that business going and keep their cost. But in this situation, it has nothing to do with the assessment.
The problem is, is to sell that property, we would have to have someone, just like the mayor says, that ran the same business.
Depending on how it's drafted, and how, how, if there's any wiggle room in that CUP, but again, yes, generally, you have to be still able to comply with those conditions.
So I don't understand the split, because even a township that have a home business, you had to have a home. And this property doesn't have a home, the home's on a separate P I D, and the business is in a residential area.
Well, it was the seventies and Burn's Township at the time.
So my guess is that this business was in place, went into zoning ordinance, it's built in place, and they are, they had a, uh, CUP under the county rules, uh, from the county issued it, uh, back in the day, fifty years ago, and that would, the, the area grew up as a residential area around this business, and it already had its permission. It can't expand that, that permission, without the town's permit, or the city's permission, but it, as long as it continues to operate and continues to meet the conditions, precision saw it can continue to be on that location.
Can a CUP be turned into an IUP?
No. Mr. Mayor, is, I have the actions for McCallmore to go back for our discussion, why is this today, it's two separate P I Ds, it's two separate plots, or say, or whether it's a business they're not, and there's valuing with all improvements, so if it's combined, it's probably a different story, but the way it is set up right now, legally, it is two separate P I Ds. Correct, so the homeowner didn't say that, like, determine if it's best for their situation to combine those or leave them separate. And if they do combine, then it's up to the property owner to approach the council and see what the council decision would be regarding, how, how they approached the assessment amount. The other option for the property owner, is they have preserved the right, would be to, once they get the assessment, the council, council has adopted the assessment resolutions, the assessment law, and that triggers sometimes certain timelines for the property owner to, uh, appeal.
Bob, she just says I object, we need to say, well, she was objecting, I object to the assessment. There's nothing here that says this.
I just write down there, I object to the assessment. But, but I object to the assessment of both problems. Because you have two P I Ds.
So really, I'm only objecting to one?
Yeah. Wait, I'm not gonna worry, right, like, you know, to this point.
Objecting to.
Jack made a line with. I object to the assessment on both problems. Including I D, both P I Ds. That preserves your rights.
Right?
But given that, can we move this forward to public hearings?
All right, we'll close the public hearing at, um, nine fourteen. If that, I would have the city administrator to keep this in a file, because if the property owner does wish to perfect her appeal and file in court, she's gonna have to ask for a copy of this, so we'll leave that, and we have an obligation, if requested, to provide that. And then that document along with the, which is like, it was documents issued in the appeal, it'd be filed, and that's, that's, she needs that to get that first step in court. Now, as the city engineer stated, there is a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract uh, for the improvement project, Waco Street, Waco Drive. Hold on a second. Hundred eighty second Avenue and Ventura Lane, this is a little bit different resolution than the normal one, because you have a joint powers agreement with the city of Ramsey. That city of Ramsey joint powers agreement says that we have to, uh, basically approve the bid amount, and give them authorization to enter into a contract on our behalf for that project, since they are the, the, the what is that, uh, gosh, G M I H Asswell Corporation, will be contracting with the city of Ramsey, we are only part of that, but that's who the contract holder, and they will be acting as our agent on this. So this, uh, resolution would be accepting, or this bid, uh, is hereby accepted and approved. Intention on G M H Asswell Corporation entering into a contract with the city of Ramsey, because they're the contract holder, but I put in that the contract is subject to the approval of both the city attorneys for the city of Ramsey and the city of Dowling, according to plans and specifications approved by the city, Dowling City Council, and on file in the office of the city administrator. In other words, just like we already said, you've got, we've already have these planned approved, Shane has worked on them, this contract, as long as their contract incorporates the plan that we have on file, and if there's ever any questions, we have the ability to review it, and if, if there's something that that Shane looks at when he's working with the city of Ramsey, and he has a question about this contract, he can present it to me, and this gives us a little bit of a way to require any sort of change in the contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
Commented by our attorney, I moved the, the separate resolution. Accepting bid and awarding the crack contract in the improvement project, Waco Street, Waco Drive, one hundred eighty second.
Okay. Motion, Councilor Randall, second with Councilor O'Brien, any other discussion? So you narrated all those.
Stay near and down all those in favor, who signify by saying aye. Aye, 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 aye. Oh, she cares.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other business, I won't do a jury.
Jury.